...of this meeting with the extent of what was provided at least 48 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner. By one, posting such notice on the public announcement board of the Lincoln Board of Education offices and the Lincoln County Municipal Building. Number two, by emailing such notice to the office of the Advertive Press. Number three, by following such notice with the Board Secretary. And four, by mailing such notice to all individuals who requested and paid for a copy of the same. We're going to roll call now. Mr. Zlackin. Mr. Jackson Byers. Mr. Newhouse. Mr. McNamara. Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Chandler.
Here.
Mr. Trice here. Ms. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Bender.
Here.
We will form. Mistress Larkin has asked to participate via phone. He is in Florida. He was supposed to be here for the meeting tonight, but due to the weather and cancellation of flights, he's running a little late, but Jim has it set up, Mr. Shad has it set up. So when he is available, we can put him on via phone. We also do know that other board members are on their way due to the weather, but we should start, so we are now starting. Right now, we have a presentation. Do you introduce budgets to Mr. Fink?
Thank you. Okay. We don't have it up there on the screen. You all have to have it.
We did. We did. We had to let me help you.
It was really public, but it's important.
Ms. Janet?
I'm trying to watch the camera.
That's good. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. I had the boys coming to show you if you said your grand's not here. Thank you. Ms. Janet, thanks. Everybody has a coffee. Let me just start off with just one quick comment about what the Tonight's meeting really is all about, but I know it happens to board members who are not really aware of it. Hello? Hello?
We turned it up a little.
Yeah, I'm sorry. What we have tonight is we're introducing this two-step budget process. Introduction of budget, then eventually a public hearing and adoption of budget. Tonight's the first step, introducing the budget. What happens tonight after the board approves it, it goes to county superintendent of schools for review, and she will work with the county business administrator to review it. They will have to schedule a meeting, I think Laura and I have a meeting with them on the 18th of April to go review the budget with them. Essentially, their roles, review it, make some recommendations that they can correct, changes that they feel are in, and then certify the advice in the newspaper. That will be towards the end of April. And then on May 7, which is the last available date, which is still the end, so gives us enough time to negotiate with the state, then we'll have our public hearing. And that is when we actually adopt the budget. Tonight is really approving it for introduction and for submission to the county superintendent for review. Nine times out of ten, most budgets tend to change between the introduced budget and the public hearing budget. There's always some adjustments. Same goes as true for Lake, where there will be some adjustments. You will get to that in the presentation itself. So with that, what's included in this budget? First of all, this will be the first time in several years that a budget has truly been put together thorough to have a thorough and efficient education. We looked at the needs. We looked at what teachers needed, what the students needed, what administrators needed, what salary, what payroll amounts we needed, you know, number of staff. We put a budget together not based on, well, here's how much we're getting from the state, so that's the number we're going to move our budget to. This was, this is what we need, and now this is how much the state has to kick in, as opposed to the other way around. This is what the state's going to kick in, now make a budget that equals that. So I'm very proud of what we put together here. Whether this stands up or doesn't stand up, we will find out as the time goes by, which we now will have a hearing. We put a budget together that says that we can certify to at this number, at this amount, this will provide a thorough and efficient education. What else is in here? Funds to ensure that all current staff currently working here now will be employed for next year. Now, we're not saying there's a raise, but they will be employed, and there will be sufficient funds budgeted in the payroll accounts. We're replacing 10-year-old Spanish textbooks and 18-year-old health education textbooks. You know, we have it on there on the presentation. It's sad, but that is not something, in my experience working on other districts, that's just routine stuff. Every five years, you get your textbooks. You know, you put it in a budget thing, but that's just something you do. It's not anything that needs to be tabbed. No, this is wonderful. This is a shame that we have 10-year-old Spanish textbooks and 18-year-old health education textbooks. There's no reason for that. We have it here, and we'll get to the slides as we go through the presentation. Facilities and technology upgrades. Same thing applies to that. In most budget presentations I've ever done, unless you were building a building or doing some, putting roofs on four schools, you would have nothing really about facilities. Because that's just 18 stuff. That's what you do. You paint your rooms, you fix the floors you do, you sand the gym floors. These are not earth-shattering things. For us, they are, because they can take it out of our budgets year upon year. Now, this one, you might be scratching your head, what does he mean when he says funds for tuition and transportation have increased throughout the school year? This is like tax increase throughout the school year. New kids are constantly coming in, and no matter how much you seem to budget, it's always more. In the past couple of years, what's been, what I've seen looking back at the old budgets, okay, we had 100 kids going to school X. Well, next year will be the same 100 kids, even though every year it's gone from three or four or five or 15. Past couple of budgets we've had have all but ensured that we would be continuing at a deficit. There would be extra monies put in there to cover any kind of contingencies, extra monies to cover any kind of possibilities, even though looking at the historical past of some of these accounts, where you see, gee, every year it goes up by 10%, which only budgeted 5% or more. Because every, they were trying to back into a number. That number was, their boss said, here's what it is, make that budget back into it, knowing full well that all was going to happen. You may, you know, keep going into a deficit or, you know, eke out at the end of the year with a $140 million budget, $300,000 in surplus like last year, which was. Which brings me to the next one. In this budget, we do have funds for the.
The record should reflect, Mr. Tricer's here.
We have money in here to provide an adequate level of surplus, and year-end is recommended by the DOE. DOE says you should have at least 2% surplus, okay? We're $4 million in the hole. So what we're trying to do, at least in this budget, is to make sure we have somewhere close to at least 1% surplus, so towards the J-DOE recommendation. And again, will we have that surplus at year-end? I think we budgeted, in this next budget, we budgeted pretty well, and I think there's a good likelihood we could have at the end of next year with maybe a million dollars left over to pay down our deficit. But if we don't, at least we have that million dollars to cover any other contingencies that may come up, which we know what we've done. And then lastly, what's included in this budget? A thorough and efficient education. Now, let's take a look now at the revenues.
And if you remember, the monitor's up consistently, it says it's a revenue problem, not a spending problem.
We'll go through all of it. We won't belabor, but let's look at the very bottom line of the column that's proposed 2018-19. That's our request for additional state aid, $28.2 million. So you understand this year, there was a lot of talk by the new governor when he was running and got elected, we're going to fully fund the funding formula, we're going to fully fund extraordinary aid, we're going to fully fund preschool, we're going to fully fund a lot of things. Well, ha-ha, it didn't happen. We got an extra $239,000 in state aid. Now, I'm not going to say, not the 200, I'm not going to, you know, sneeze at $239,000, but let's just be real honest. If you're $28.2 million in the hole and someone gives you $239, yes, you can thank them, but it's really not going to make a big difference, okay? And that's essentially what they did. Now, they will tell you, when you look on the DOE's website, oh, Lake, we got $407,000 for it. Yes, we did. And then three other forms of, I'm sorry, yeah, three other forms of state aid that they used to give us, they got rid of. Okay? They used to give us park aid, per pupil growth aid, professional learning aid, those are those little ones, $63,000, $58,000 each. Yeah, they got rid of those. They said, oh, but we're giving you $419,202, but on the other hand, you just took back, you know, almost $200,000. Anyway, so that's all we got. We did not get full funding. We did not have formula aid. We did not get full funding of extraordinary aid. As a matter of fact, we know the voucher list as well. When you look through the state budget for next year, the state budget, they budgeted the same exact amount of money as they budgeted this year and the year before for extraordinary aid, which means that last year we got funded, I think it was 54 or 56% of what we submitted. That means this year will probably, this year, '17, '18 will probably be down to around 50%. And for next year, '18, '19 will probably be down below 50%. So even that didn't function.
And just for the board members at education, extraordinary aid is for special education students. Whereas $50,000 of what the state has always assured everyone they're going to fund out, but they're funding that at what level?
Well, last year, '17, '18, it was like around, it was either 54 or 56%. Okay? Because they don't, they don't, they don't put more money into the pot, available funds. They keep the same data every year. Districts keep putting in for more and more money, and then they just prorate it.
And as you know, we have a large adult district population. Well, then we put it to the X-Aid. So if it's many of our state-approved extraordinary aid are more than $50,000, so it affects us more than other districts, since we have so many adult district kids.
Now, going through tax levy. Now, actually, the first three lines really represent our tax levy for next year. It's made up of three things. The local tax levy, which we go up 2%, which is, that's line number one. So from '95, '96, '99, to '97, '98, '99, that's 2% maximum allowed by law. Second line, the state does allow you to go over the cap for several items. The only one we're able to take advantage of is the adjustment for healthcare costs, the increase in healthcare costs, which allows us to go above the cap by another $1,871,000. And then believe it or not.
The record should reflect, Mr. Dimmala says now.
And then, believe it or not, we actually have banked cap leftover, what the state allows you to do if you don't go up to the full 2% every year, whatever you have and use, bank it away. And according to the state printout, we have $11,238, so we're going to use it. Those three items together represent tax increase for next year. And the total tax levy for next year will be 99, well, those three items, $99,772,089, roughly a 2.9% increase. And we'll get to that slide later on about what that translates into in dollars as far as the actual one. Everything else, you could see, now miscellaneous income for next year, we're being very conservative. When we get to the public hearing budget, we might bump that up a little bit. We have it down to $750,000. That's a lesson to what we had to give for. LSTA revenue that was budgeted for this year, which we're not going to get, like, right after this year, that was what?
Leftover money from the LSTA? That represents?
I'm not sure. I believe it represents if they had any leftover money, the money we gave them, but we're not getting it this year, and I do not feel comfortable putting that into the line of revenue for next year. If we're not getting it this year, then likely it's not going to be next year. The next couple of, transportation aid, special ed, equalization and security aid. You see, that's why we only got the $419,000. Extraordinary aid, we're keeping at the same, but that's probably what we're, actually might get a little bit less of that, but we'll figure we'll keep it for the same for next year. The next three after that, professional learning, park readiness, and per pupil growth aid, those are the ones that the state got rid of and subtracted against the $419,000. Non-public transportation aid is, now that's an interesting one, because the state has now, last year they raised non-public aid lieu that we pay the LSTA, raising for all districts, but then we pay the LSTA, the aid lieu. They made it $1,000 a student. Clickdown came out of the budget software saying that that now was dropped back down again to 884. But the county office today sent that an email saying, oh, no, that was a, it must have been a mistake. It should be $1,000. And that there'll be something coming out. So we don't, so I'm just going to, that number, I'm going to leave it 5.8 billion for right now.
Is that based on?
That's based on $1,000, by the way. $1,000. And we're going to leave it in there right now until we get confirmation of which, which letter was right. Was it the letter from the commissioner last week, or was it the letter from the county superintendent this week? Can't make this stuff up.
And just so the board is aware, the LSTA is banking on the $1,000. So if it goes down to 884, they're going to be in a financial dire monitor because they're all.
My world.
Right, because it will go down to 884. But there seems to be some contradiction, as you said, about what their amount.
I saw it today, and I was like, okay, well, who's going to push money?
How that affects our budget because.
Well, it's a wash. Let's say it does come down to 884. Okay? So we pay the LSTA less, or I'm paying $1,000, still I'm paying 884, still. Okay? So yes, on our appropriation side, we can cut down the amount. But on the revenue side, because the state pays anything above $710, they pay the difference to give you aid at the end of the year. So if you're banking on going from $710 to $1,000, 290 kid now is only going from $710 to $884, 174 kid, it's basically washed. I'm paying the LSTA less, but I'm getting less reimbursement from the state. So nine times, 99 times out of 100, it's just a wash, not going to make really a difference. Medicaid reimbursement, that's special ed students who are on Medicaid and who we are allowed to put in for certain things and services that we provide, Medicaid pay for if they're covered under Medicaid. I actually had a much higher number than that based upon what we actually brought in. I put in, we brought in last year like $1,004,000. I put in $1,250,000, and the county superintendent's office said, no, you can't put that, no, that's too high. You can only put in what you put in, what was in there for last year. And we have to put in for a waiver request, and hopefully by the time, you know, they gave us a waiver, put in the $820,000, they may give us another waiver before public hearing, we can go higher, which you would think they would, because the higher that goes, the lower the additional state aid. Logical. Transfer from other funds, yes, that number came down, but this is where, this is where the United Academy is going to get really weird, so just let me explain it as best I can. It's no loss to us in our pocket, okay? For this year, we're allowed to prepare a budget for the state using school-based budgeting. It's a really happy phrase that they use, a system where on the DOE software, okay, you actually put in budgets for each one of your schools. And then on the general fund side, which the tax levy is based on, you have all your expenses, but then this big expense that goes over to the schools, it just shows up as one line, transfer to school-based budgets. We've actually been using school-based budgets the last couple of years, but the state moderator has allowed us to use them, and they felt that, I believe, Title I required because of the aid that they were giving, because it's a school-wide program. Long and short of it, it's not, it's not that we're losing any revenue, it's how we had to report it in the past. We had to show that the grant, Title I grant, was sending over to the general fund, that If, now that this year, when we're doing the budget with school-based budgets for the state, that $1,906,675 just goes straight over from Title I, it doesn't have to come into the general fund first, and they'll be transferred out. So yes, we're not showing it as a line of revenue, but our expenses have also come down equivalently by the same amount, because we're now just putting in our local share, not the Title I share. And that's like the easiest, so it doesn't hurt us, it doesn't help us, it doesn't hurt us. It's just, but in order to show apples with apples, someone's going to say, well, on last year's budget, you had this line saying transfer in from, you know, from other funds, but I showed. Proceeds from bus leasing purchase. Again, that's a wash. But might know, we went out for bus lease this year, so we got those proceeds. And then on the expenditure side, we paid for buses with it. And then, of course, my favorite line, the last one, $28.2 million additional state aid. You can call it alone, you can call it advanced, you can call it whatever, it turned out to be at the end, it is additional state aid, it's the aid we should be getting if this funding formula was changed to correctly take into account Lakewood's demographics and situation. Okay? We probably, if they changed the funding formula, would get a lot more than $28.2 million. Think about it. We're getting for next year, Mel and I, with Mr. White and I, we thought before the meeting, my $25 million and change of state aid in a $165 million budget. Okay? That's roughly what, 15%? And that is so, you know, considering the size of a budget, that's so minimal. And almost at the level of what districts, like when I was working up in Bergen County, well-to-do, well-heeled districts, okay? Average property values and assessed values of 7, 8, 9 hundred thousand dollars a home, and even TNET was getting 6 to 7% of the budget state aid. How can we have a level of poverty that we have here? And the, right, and the number of students in poverty, and it's, you're only getting, you know, a part of Bergen County kind of state aid? It makes no sense.
Could I interrupt you for a second on the comment?
Yes.
On the state aid revenue line, just because there's a point. You know, I don't get to speak to the board that many times. I was here in the January, we talked about state aid formula and why it didn't work for Lakewood. But we were talking about the formula, if it were fully funded, it wouldn't work. Keep in mind, as you were indicating, they didn't show it not to fully fund it, they locked it to phase in full funding over a four-year period. Important thing about looking at, if you start with transportation aid through the four S-FRA categories, which are transportation, special ed, equalization aid, and security aid. Okay? To begin with, those dollar amounts are assigned to the wrong category. Okay? Those are not the categories where you'll see money when you go to full funding. Remember, we talked about in January that your equalization aid might go to zero? We talked about the fact that you might qualify as an adjustment aid district. We talked about that your biggest aid category would be transportation. Well, that is indeed true. All, all three of those statements are true. If you look at the state aid printouts and what your aid would have looked like had you been fully funded, your eighth total here for those four amounts, it's a little, little over $25 million. I think it's $25,32,000 or something. If you had.
$32,000 to $82,000.
Right. If you had gone to full funding, you would have been at $25,750,000. Okay? So they've gotten you partially to $25,750,000. Okay? But it's important to look at how that $25,750,000 would be broken down when you get to full funding. Okay? Had you gone to full funding this year, instead of your equalization aid being 15 million, it would be 2.2. You would see a new category would show up on your printouts, adjustment aid, which would be another 2-point-some million dollars, and your transportation aid would be at 13 million. What the state did, they gave you all of the $419,202 dollar increase, they gave it to you all in one category. They said, in the categories that are below what they would be if we're full funding, we'll add it to those categories first, and then we'll just sequentially add it to the categories. Well, for the next three years, if nothing happens with the state aid formula, the only place you'll see an increase will be transportation aid. And that gets to 13 million. In that following year, you're going to see, by value equalization, in one more year, we'll have been zero. You might see enough $4 million in adjustment aid. Now, adjustment aid in theory is important, because according to the formula, it's districts that's not required to provide a thorough and efficient education. Because in theory, the formula is giving you enough money. We know that's not the case. We know that the problem that we predicted about the local fair share still exists. It went up another $9 million. It's now 111, somewhere between 111 and 12 million. So you have to keep in mind that this is going to be your state revenue situation for the foreseeable future. The $25,750,000, that's where you're going to be for three or four years unless they do something with the state aid formula. So the problem that we have now, needing a state aid, additional state aid, or 21 million, 28 million, that's going to be a problem every year, absent any action on that state aid formula, because being the, talking about the same thing every year, until they fix the state aid formula.
The record should reflect, Ms. Jackson, thank you. Is here?
Yes, she's here.
Now, even though we're not discussing grants on this, because we're really concentrating on what's going to affect the general fund tax levy, just to let it be known that our preschool education aid for next year, no additional money change we got this year. The only item that we got, some additional state aid, we get the state aid for our debt service, we don't pay our bonds. The state lovingly gave us $3,904. I'm sure it broke the bank on that. Now, big question, why do we need more state aid than last year? Starting from the top, we're going to approve this fairly quickly. Last year, we received the eight and a half.
I see a loan.
Well.
Eight and a half.
Based on that, we, now I know Mel was going, that what full funding really would or wouldn't be, but we've been basing a lot on the printout we got from the state last year, the budget package, which said what they calculated full funding would be, and we've been using that 3.2 million number. So when we started out earlier this year, back in January, we said, oh, we got eight and a half. If we get fully funded for formula aid, extraordinary aid, additional other revenues, like the semi-money that I couldn't put in right now, and the interest, some other items, refunds, and then deduct against that, well, we discussed back in January, the transportation increase, tuition benefits, charter school, other expenses. Prior to getting the state aid numbers on March 15, we were sitting at $20,28 million of what we would, we don't have to ask the state for for next year. Then we got the state aid printouts. And state facilities tuition, which the state deducts from your state aid, is $90,000 higher than what we projected. But then the one that was the real shocker was the charter school tuition. We thought we'd have a $700-some-thousand increase, it was really a million and a half dollar, million and a half dollar increase. I won't belabor the point on that other than to say, the state for charter schools, charter schools are, they get no state aid. Charter schools get their aid from the districts that send the kids to the charter school. Preachers acquire, you know, that's a hedge, remember? Except the state doesn't base, like, you know how we make a budget? Say, now, here's our budget, and we've got a raise in taxes. For charter schools, the state says, no. What they do is they look at the districts, okay, that charter school is housed in, and they say, you have to give a percentage of your revenue, your per pupil, not per pupil cost, your per pupil revenue. Sad part is, is we keep getting more and more quote-unquote state aid loans, state aid advances, additional state, whatever you may want to call it. Why did that money go to charter schools? So next year, let's assume we get this $28 million, the charter school is going to get the reform. Okay? Because they're already, if you looked at last year, and you said there were 160 kids, and we were budgeting, well, there's going to be 60 more, and in fact, there are 60 more. It was a pretty simple mathematical thing, what we give last, you know, this year, by 160 kids, now multiplied by 60 kids, it came out to $728,000. But because of. But because of the big state aid advance we got this year, suddenly the charter school gets, according to state aid printout, the seven-twenty-eight plus an extra eight-hundred-and-thirty thousand.
So, can I break this down? The more loans we take, the more charter schools get. What about, in a grand scheme?
I'll, I'll just leave it at that. But hey, the state did save us money. On our school development inquiry assessment, they knocked off eleven dollars. Don't say that they didn't give us anything, eleven dollars. Okay, adding to that twenty point eight million dollars that we're sitting at, we got the, going back to January, again, not fully funded, so adding that three point two back, not fully funded for extraordinary aid, adding three billion back. Transportation aid, yes, that's the four-hundred-and-nineteen thousand extra we got, so that one was a little bit. But again, they took away the, the free aids, professional learning, parking, per pupil roof, and semi, I couldn't put in the four million, two fifty, I'd only said it'd be eight twenty, so they knocked me down to state four-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, but you should be able to put that in by the time we move on to the public hearing. That's how we get up to twenty-eight million, one eighty-two oh nine.
So, just so everyone's clear, when Mr. Finkerman is excellent presentation, in January, in simple English, as he told you, we were banking on being fully funded, as the governor and the said, and other, and therefore, now that we have the numbers, it's twenty-eight million, but he will continue.
And, not that we're, you know, there could be some more changes between now and the public hearing, but as of right now, the only thing that's going to get added to that twenty-eight million dollars is possibly the two point seven million for increases, salary increases, new and or vacant, filling the vacant positions.
And just so we're clear about that, especially with, we thank the parents, I see a belated public school for coming, as you think. Uh, the vacant positions are such things as bilingual teachers, bilingual child study team members. These are things that we need in our ever-growing population, unique population. Those positions weren't filled this year, so they're not new positions. Those are positions that we need, so we can better communicate with our student population, and that's why we did bilingual teachers. We had bilingual teachers, but more, and more child studies.
And hopefully, we'll be able to knock two million, uh, two million fifty thousand dollars off of that number if the state allows us to refer repayment for next year. Right now, that two million fifty thousand is in the budget for next year. Because we've not gotten anything, writing, saying, take down the budget for next year.
Before you leave this page, you do see a line, preschool disabled expansion. Tomorrow, we will be getting responses, hopefully, from our RFP.
There's a slide, a slide.
Okay. I, I promise some people that they remember that high time.
Almost there.
Almost there.
Okay. Township grants, again, we're requesting the same funding as we got this year. Helped up the pay for the, the courtesy buses, if they have, with the LSTA law, for the pay for non-public related services, the sports programs, talking with the town, we're hopeful that they'll give us the money. Just keep in mind, if they don't for some reason, or if they can't give us the money, then that's just going to add to what we're going to be asking the state for. We're going to get another some point in.
Before you leave this page, I'm sure you heard what I...
I'm just kidding, not that.
Glad that I wanted to make sure that you're, because they will be asked. Public, we'd like to change that word to safety busing, because that is, or a part of the LSTA law required the township, this is, there is no courtesy busing to pay for for non-public. There is a township agreed by law to pay, so they are obligated to pay that. Uh, we have spoken to the township manager, and I've spoken to the township liaison, Mr. Augustine, about these numbers. Of course, the township has come out with that their bond rating is going down for giving us all this money. So, we are not banking on this, they haven't said no, they haven't said yes, but we are going to go, they have to pay the one point six eight four, we'd like that we continue with the other two items, but there is no commitment to that, but we will be here for that.
Appropriations, you can obviously agree with your leisure and go through all this. You can take away anything from this slide, here's what you need to really take away from. If you look at the increases, the salaries, and, uh, I'm sorry, not the increases, the percentage of the budget for salaries and benefits. Salaries and benefits make up forty-five percent of our budget. Yet again, it's, last year, we made up forty-eight percent, now we're down to forty-five percent of the budget. Tuition and transportation for next year is to think up over forty-two percent of our budget. That is unheard of, and it is, I don't care what anyone will tell me, there is no money anywhere in the state of New Jersey where forty-two cents on the dollar of a school budget goes to tuition and transportation. And that is why, that is mandated, and that is why the state aid funding formula has to be changed for Lakewood. Because there is no place where, where it works like this, for forty-two, where you're paying literally as much for tuition and transportation as you're paying for salary and benefits. And again, salary and benefits in most districts comprise sixty to sixty-five percent of the budget, not forty-five percent. Now, as I said earlier, the budget and facilities projects, which you can't. Other districts, these are just things that are just a parcel of the normal routine, year-to-year maintenance, like floor, putting down new flooring, painting, sidewalk, pothole repair, even track repair. All the things are here. But for us, this is a first, to put six-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars in the budget and say, you know what? The kids need a safe environment, carry it, end of story. Budgeted technology projects, same thing, these are things that are just done routinely. Okay, smart board projectors, strobe lights, your security, renewing your Microsoft Office license. It's nice to do that, although they shut it off after a while. Upgrading software that the kids use, so they're not using outdated versions of software. Putting in a secondary internet circuit, so when one goes down, you have a redundant circuit to work on. I worked in this, we had a circuit of three redundant circuits, not just one.
Oh, we don't even have one.
When that's, I, I know, but here. Do we have a redundant circuit? No, this is, yeah. Not that one, because, yeah. Current staff vacancies, we talk about the twenty-four vacancies. As Michael was saying earlier, bilingual teachers, half teachers, very hard to get, half teachers. Special ed teachers, you can see the list. My understanding, we may, can we just fill this picture, we really be filling this? All right, twenty-three vacant positions. Here's the key slide for the public hearing. Unbudgeted costs, what's not in this budget tonight? Again, as you said, increases, for this to hear back from the state, what we can give people.
I try. Let me just stress that.
New and or vacant positions, that line is over almost two point seven million.
The county average were, uh, with unions, is about three percent, we've seen. Uh, we're not prejudging, we're not discussing negotiations. As the unions know, both the LDA and the LAA, we have asked the state monitors for a number that we could bargain and could pay for, because just to sit there and smile doesn't really do us all much, doesn't do them much. We have still yet to hear from the, uh, monitors. Uh, also, Mr. Finkerman, in this calculation, uh, if we would even consider, uh, and we're not prejudging, but this, the county average, the three percent increase, counties where they don't have an urban population, districts where they don't have an urban population, districts where they do not have a bilingual population district, where two parents and the dog live in the house, and they all go to valet afterwards. Uh, if we would do three percent, the staff, not that we are negotiating, but taking the county average, that would cost us another million, three eighty-three, two sixty, which is not even in this budget, because we have no money, and we are waiting for the monitors to tell us how much we can negotiate.
So, it obviously doesn't pace to negotiate, and by only be able to turn around at the end and have the monitor override it. And also, most, most, most of the time, the teachers here, you also need to take, when you say, well, let's, let's at least negotiate the non-financial items, that doesn't take very long, and they don't really, they're not going to be that interested in going down unless they got something on the table. Preschool disabled program, right now, we operate a preschool disabled program within the district. And pioneers, at the, like, where the childhood centers, uh, students attend in those schools, students from, obviously, within the community, within the district. And, the interesting part about this is, is that when you look, and let's just sort of the next slide, very quick, for a second. We are maxed out. As a marcher thinks, we have four-hundred-and-fifty-five students, and we got basically the same number of students as we had the whole year, the year before, we still have three months left in the school year, okay? When we sat and we tried to explain this to the state monitor, that we really suspect for next year, yes, going to be students that age out, that they're five, they're in kindergarten. But we are very, you know, sure, and we will, all those kids that age out are going to be replaced by new kids, plus ninety-six more. Normally, you can't have more than eight kids within age of a teacher, preschool disabled class. So, if we figure ninety-six kids, eight to a class, we need twelve classrooms. We have an RFP that we're opening hopefully tomorrow, or tomorrow, the open day, hopefully, there will be an RFP. Couple of people, fill it for at least space, some of what we do for Pioneer Elementary. To me, this is a win-win on many different levels. Let's say, we go out and we lease the space, and we are able to bring these kids within district, that will cost us a lot less than sending them out of district.
And this is not discretionary, these are children ages three to five, public school students who attend public schools, if we don't have a place to send them, as Mr. Finkerman said.
Then they got to go out of district, and probably double or even triple the cost.
These state-approved rates for any out of districts are anywhere from fifty to sixty thousand to ninety-plus, that doesn't include busing. So, I'm bad at math, but if you take two point five million divided by ninety-six kids, that equals...
That's twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand, a preschool or so, and that gives him the therapy, the teachers, the space.
That's actually, it's including busing.
Oh, includes buses.
Oh, you, well, including busing, I have to add.
If we don't have space, which we currently don't have, we have, we have an obligation to send these kids, whether it be to special children's center, Alpha, Lehman, Shy, they have the right to have as a public school student. If you don't have something to offer them, there's not even a challenge, you have to offer them something. We are maxed out, so I'm not quite sure either. The monitors have asked for backup, we have given them backup. Again, I know Mr. Finkerman said this, but if you look up at page eleven, as he said, as of March, you had the same amount of kids as you had through June of last year. We're maxed out, and kids turn three, not in September, every day. We average six to eight kids a, a week here.
Oh, and not only that, but at this point now, any new students coming in this year, we have, we have a wish list set up to the balance of school year, which will only add to the amount of money we need to find within our budget right now for tuition, which was not properly budgeted for, for this year's smartphone. So, that's a problem. Now, why do I say this is a win-win? We have the state monitors saying, well, why don't you don't get ninety-six kids, now you're running twelve classrooms? They don't have, we don't use them. We said, yes, but assuming that happens, we could then bring kids back from out of district, where you're paying fifty, eighty, a hundred thousand dollars a kid, plus busing, and bring them back in the district the same way. To me, I don't see the, I don't see any downside on this, I only see an upside. So, we still have that.
You walk on a little block here.
You can also take kids out of trailers, put them in buildings.
That's right.
We currently, one of the ways I used to whip you, if I may, is that we used to say there were kids, which you don't want a kid learning, and they call it modular, but it's a trailer. And if once a judge hears that kids are learning in trailers, and just so you understand, trailers means many of our situations here, which we used when we sued you, uh, which we're not happy about currently, to get from one class to another, you have to, there's no hallway. You have to go through a classroom, disturbing the education, et cetera. Uh, the floors are not even in some of the trailers, called modulators. So, I've got lost, uh, why anyone would question this, and I hope that the superintendent, and it is the superintendent, will say with their convictions to this, even if we don't get ninety-six kids, we have kids who right now are getting thanks to the teachers and therapists, a great education, most of the time. But the fact is, is that they are in substandard, or what you call it, that those are not classrooms.
And even the state always, well, essentially, the state says you can't really be in a module for more than five years, but...
How many kids, so the whole LECC is built on modular, uh, I'm sorry, Linden Avenue. The entire setup there in Linden Avenue is trailers and modular, how many would that be? Twenty-four trailers. So, you figure that out, again, this is an estimate, let's say, eight kids, figure it out, it's a lot. Again, the teachers and staff and therapists are dedicated, but surely, you don't want when your kid's getting, if your kid already has learning issues, we don't want to have that disturb when a teacher and aide, I don't even think, maybe I'm wrong, I forgot this part of my old cases, do you have a lunchroom in the trailers?
No, they, they, family style.
All right, they in the classroom is part of the curriculum, okay.
They can have them come in the building, I know they're modular.
Yeah, but it's not ideal.
The kids are raining snow.
So, this is something we need to look at, uh, immediately.
This, this slide, we asked, actually, the state monitor, and asked all our administrators, our building principals, our supervisors, and this is not a wish list, they were actually put together a needs assessment. What do they need in their building, what they need in their classroom, what they need in their, in their offices in order to provide a thorough and efficient education? It came back, almost twelve million dollars.
That's the number on the bottom right-hand?
Bottom right-hand corner, okay, go away to the bottom end. Twelve million dollars. These are, these are amounts, these are not included in the budget, okay? These will never be included in the budget until we get full funding from the state to change the state aid formula.
And I reviewed the needs assessments of the principals and supervisors. Let's, we're not talking about getting driven by a Lexus from one classroom to another. We're talking about young students like we have here tonight, and we thank you for coming, having in the elementary levels, having music classes after school, things that Howell and other districts do. Right now, we have limited opportunities for elementary, for example, elementary school kids that have clubs. We do have tutoring, but they have a right, like, if you live only one mile north, south, east, or west, they have clubs after school, music, things like this, that you would say, why don't we have them? And that, this is not even included in the budget, so I'm not going to sit here and listen to people say that we are, uh, padding this or not. I'm not going to hear people saying, we only need ten to fifteen million dollars, we don't. And anyone who wants to review this, can gladly review this in contact, uh, through the superintendent's office, Mr. Finkerman, and discuss this, but that, Mr. Finkerman.
And now for the... Next to last slide, I guess it's the slide everyone's kind of interested in too, what's this, what? That we have right now, what is that hundred and sixty-five million dollar budget going to cost with a ninety-nine point seven million dollar tax limit? It would come out to right now, again, I know that I have these numbers, are, uh, up to date through last year. We have, we're using the, uh, the ratables from two thousand seventeen, keeping those ratables the same. The ratables probably have gone up, but Ocean County Tax Board hasn't posted equalized valuation of ratables yet. But keeping it apples with apples, so last year into this year, keeping everything equal, okay? We've come out to approximately a ninety-six dollar tax increase on the average assessed home, with an average assessed value of three-hundred-and-thirty thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety dollars. Uh, I know Lake was going to, I think, several, not reval, reassessments, there probably will be another one for next year, no, probably, for next year. Uh, I did see something recently that might, I think, that totally equalized ratables now over ten million.
That's on a home of how much?
Uh, on a home value of three-hundred-and-thirty thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety dollars, the tax bill would go up ninety-six dollars.
By the way, as you know, we do not need permission from the tax, we're not, there's no longer that. It's an automatic two percent. How do you get above the two percent since that's the state law, Mr. Finkerman?
Well, there are several exemptions, one of them, the healthcare costs, we're allowed to increase over both the tax levy. There's, uh, one that we were talking about the other day, shift of responsibility, which we're hoping that the state doesn't decide that they want to shift the responsibility onto us, and tell us to just raise taxes above two percent. And, uh, then there's the use of bank account. But we, we will be at the max. So, when people turn around and say, well, gee, you're asking twenty-eight million dollars from the state, what are you guys doing? Whoa, 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 we raised our taxes two percent. Plus, on top of that, another one percent with the health insurance, we're, we're at the max we're allowed to be. Okay? If the state wants to dump it back on us, okay? Then you're talking about, instead of the three percent tax increase, they're talking like, hey... the three percent tax increase, it's like eighty percent tax increase. That's equally unsustainable. And just reiterate the timelines, again, we've got to get this approved tonight, we have, before the twenty-ninth, we have to get it to county superintendent by twenty-ninth, we'll meet with them on the eighteenth of April, we should probably advertise this around by that point around April twenty-eighth or so, and, or thereabouts, and then we'll have a public hearing on May seventh, that's the last date, we're allowed to have a public hearing, we felt that's a good idea to push it to the end, it's allowed to support by negotiating with the state.
Through the chair, we also want to announce, we received today, two letters, one from, I'll let her catch up, you with me? She translates, no worries, great. When you're, no, I'll finish. We received today two letters of support for the public school students. One from the Lakewood VOD, and one from the EVOD, which is the organization of approximately a hundred-and-twenty schools. These are Orthodox organizations who have fully supported, in their letters, the public school students, that they deserve everything they need for a thorough and efficient education. While their students, while their students who are Orthodox do not go here, they have put in writing for the first time, at this early stage, that they fully support the public school students' right to what we call a thorough and efficient education, and we thank them for that. I have all, I have also spoke, so we do thank them, and the community as a whole is working together, together, so all children get what they need. So we thank them, again, this has not happened ever before, at this stage where they have fully supported the public school budget, even though their children don't necessarily go to the public school. I do report tonight that I have spoken to the monitor as of around five-thirty, the monitor is aware of Mr. Shafter, I did converse with Mr. Ozara, but spoke directly with Mr. Shafter, he is fully aware, he has been aware, he received his PowerPoint, he is fully aware that we are submitting this request to the county. He is reviewing the numbers, he is aware of the numbers, and he is verifying them, which is part of his job, but he is not disputing those numbers and fully supports what we're doing tonight. What happens next, as Bob said, as Mr. Finger said, is that you send this to the county, they review it, they have questions, and then it goes further to the state. What I do want to show you tonight is a short presentation that I did not charge you for, so if we could have Mr., where did my security from? If we could shut the lights, I don't know where he went. Stillwell, Mr. Stillwell, hold on, hold on, we're going to get Mr. Stillwell, he's securing us right now. He's gone. We gotta get that key to the lights, Jim. Gotta get that key to the lights. Oh, you have the key to the lights. All right, so, thank you, sir. We're getting better here. Here, you can, oh, okay. Hold on. We want our public school parents, and we thank you for coming, and we thank you for bringing your children, but we want to show you a short presentation of things that are not yet included, but it is the recommendation of the superintendent and staff that may be included, so please watch the attached video, which will be on the screen shortly. The reason I'm presenting this is because this is what I do for a living, make presentations, I'll be into court, based on data, not on fiction. So, Mr. Tushad is shutting the lights. Hint, hint. And at least he's trying. Tushad, okay, and now we will play, please watch the screen, please watch the screen. He runs also, thank you, Jim Dombro. Please translate as we do this. Give our kids a chance, show them a red light. This is unheard of, to have classes in a lunchroom. Again, as a lawyer, this would be about a heyday. We have classes, and this is focusing on a middle school. We have classes in the middle school, this is a library. Watch this. It's divided in a library, so A, we have less library space, B, unless your hearing's impaired, you're going to hear what the other teacher's saying, not exactly an ideal situation. These children deserve what children only a mile away get. And as you see on the bottom, I feel that. This is an orchestra class, we're trying to encourage students to be part of music, that's a good thing. Well, you don't have a classroom in this place, you get to do it behind a curtain while the kids, because we don't have enough room in the lunchroom, so you go figure how they handle it, focusing on the instructor while the lunchroom overflow, because we don't have enough in the lunchroom. So twenty minutes they eat, and then they go to the auditorium, while they walk. These are kids receiving physical therapy, these are classified students. Here is the classroom, behind the classroom is a makeshift wall. Again, these kids are highly distracted, part of their diagnosis and classification, go figure, if you're learning in a classroom of clapping and everything else, makeshift classrooms, this is all focusing on the middle school, this is unacceptable, it's something we used when we sued you. Here's something, who the hell has lunch at nine-ten in the morning?
What?
Okay, so, Jude...
That's breakfast, that's called breakfast.
Well, that, well, yeah, but it's lunch in this district. We call, can you stop that, go back, who is in charge here? Is there a cameraman? Okay, he left us, but, he's running, but, wait on, hold on, we need to jam, wait, don't stop. We're running under control here. We need to go back to the lunchroom for the lunch. This is, this is, this is sad, this is bad. This is not a thorough, this should be backwards. How do you say backwards in Spanish, Joe? Bacalao. Okay, now that's what I say. Hold on, we're going back to the, to the lunchroom, eight-twenty minutes? No, no, no. Come right after this, David. We're getting there. You should visit. Of course, the parents can, air, stop. There are eight-twenty-minute lunch periods, we don't have enough room in the lunchroom. Therefore, we start lunch at nine-ten AM, not breakfast, lunch. For more normal people, it's breakfast. The middle school population is forced to have lunch starting at nine-ten, you're not that hungry at nine-ten, especially if you just got there at seven-thirty, seven o'clock. But due to space limitations and contractual limitations, our students are forced to have eat fast and eat early, because by twelve-on-one, our last period, continue. You be the judge. There you see it, lunchroom, beautiful lunchroom, just not big enough for our population, our public school children deserve the right to have lunch more than twenty minutes and more than at nine-ten in the morning. Here's another example. Despite good staff and good teachers, this is, stop there, please, this is a special ed classroom, from what I understand, please note that there is one teacher, a great teacher actually, one aide, classroom aide, and one one-on-one aide dictated by a student's IEP. I would hate if someone would work in that classroom, because there'd be no room to be able to do that. This is what we are, this almost looks like third world. It looks pretty, to the teacher's credit, and she does a great job, I know that personally. Notice how, look at the walls, you don't see this in fancy districts, how nice she does, but look at the little room our students have. This is the gym. We're forced to have too many kids at one time in the gym. They're all having a good time. Now, this is important, so we're going to show you a blow-up. Stop there. Yeah, for my classroom. What we did, and we like data in court, because this is a court fight, us against the state, however you want to call it. This is based on data and not on fiction. If you notice, we took the total student population, and it has gone up by two-hundred-and-fifty-seven, quite dramatic, fourteen-fifteen till projected. Projected is based on kids in elementary school, up by two-fifty-seven. General ed students up by one-eighty-one, special ed students up by seventy-six. LEP is limited English proficient, up by one-hundred-and-forty-six students. Yet, if you go to the average class size, you will see sad facts. Well, look at the average class size for our sixth graders, if we don't do something, it's going up to twenty-nine-plus students, our seventh graders are going up to thirty-one-point-three students, our eighth graders, if I'm reading this right, and it's a little trick, correct me, is going up to twenty-eight-point-nine students. These numbers are not good. Continue. How do you say continue? Okay, again, more numbers, these numbers cannot be disputed, they all come from data, which, oh, okay, I guess we want the data. Okay, that's okay, go on. The board, to their credit, in Jan-, oh, heavens, the board, to their credit, on January, is he in his office? Jim, are you with me tonight? Okay, the board, please do laughter, the board approved on January twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen, to increase the cafeteria to get trailers or modulators to add classrooms. It was approved, you already did this in two thousand seventeen, it was canceled due to lack of funds. Thus, you see the kids having breakfast, lunch, at nine-ten. Continue, James. I think, I'm going to start speaking English, Jim. Okay. This was the projected site plan, which is up there on the chart, if you would stop, this was already drawn, approved by the board, it went to the DOE, to, if you see, to propose an addition to the cafeteria. Again, the board, to their credit, approved it in two thousand seventeen, but it was canceled due to lack of funds. Projected site plan, we don't want trailers, but we need space. So these were approved in two thousand seventeen, you see the four to the left, which would go, yes, thank you, James. So, remember, that was approved, now canceled, knocked by the board. Our public school students need room, need space. Okay. I thought I did it the last, yeah. Give our kids a chance, show them a red light. Okay, so there you have it. I imagine...
Michael Hollywood next, excuse me.
Bollywood, yes. So as we sit in the dark here, we will, we, it is what it is, we just have to deal with it. Jim, we know you're doing a great job. We have a situation, now, by the way, this is not included in our budget. This is not included in our budget, even though the middle school students need this now, well, it'll be on your agenda next week, next week, next week, remember, I don't want to call you all, next week, what day next week is their meeting?
Twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth. Well, it's almost there, I understand, I understand, at the same alley. But on the twenty-eighth, you will be asked to vote to submit this, to approve this, and submit this to the state for approval again. It can't be included in the budget now, but we're asking for you to do that. Okay. So at this point, we ask anyone from the public or anyone from the board, because I didn't make assurances, and I am now eleven minutes over that assurance, I'm sure I'll pay, but is there any, are there any questions? We're not saying there has to be, from the public or board. You all got this earlier today, that's why they're not asking questions, because they all reviewed it and asked their questions prior to the meeting, but are there any questions? Any questions from the public, any questions from the board? The board has reviewed this.
Any of these proposed expansions, right? That's not even part of the twenty-eighth?
It can't be part of the twenty-eighth, because we have to get DOE approval, so you're running...
So even if, let's say we get to twenty-eighth, we still don't have this?
So that is what, yeah, no, hey, Bob.
They would be done as lease purchases and moved to the buses, so if we could get the state approval for next year, we would go out with financing next year, okay? And we could get the work done, in other words, the financing, they give us the money, we get the work done, then in the subsequent year, past nineteen-twenty, then we saw the first payment back. So they'd be having time and budget for that.
So, but we still should pursue this, I hope we will agree. Are there any other questions from board members? What you need to do now, I'd like to ask Mel, who is a state expert, we brought him here again, Mel has been very helpful, working with Mr. Finger, and working with administration, and if you have any closing, less than two minutes, because I owe these guys for coming up, and I have a minute. Any comments, Mel, or anything that would gain the attention of the people down one-ninety-five?
Well...
He can't do it, if you have an hour, but if you...
I have a lot of things to say, but, but I'll try to be brief. I think you can clearly see that between now and May seventh, your fiscal dilemma is, everything's kind of coming, it's been festering, it's coming to a head. Okay, when things come to a head, something's got to give. Okay. I, I think the board should, one, I guess initially, has to be helpful at this point that the executive county superintendent and state monitors will approve a budget that will enable the district to provide a thorough and efficient education, and which will be balanced, okay? Now, which means, doesn't necessarily have to be the board you presented tonight, as Bob mentioned, it could change, but in my opinion, it needs to be balanced. By the time you would be required to approve that budget, it would be on May seventh. If, and this is just my personal opinion here, if, if the budget for some reason does not meet the board's minimum definition of a thorough and efficient education, and is not balanced, and I think you need to keep in mind, both of those conditions should exist, it has to meet your minimum expectations in terms of T and E and be balanced, I mean, it has to have available revenue with it. And, you know, from, you know, very, it could come from various sources, but it has to be available, then you're going to have a critical decision at that point about what you do.
Right.
You know, would you approve a budget that would not provide a thorough and efficient education, or would you approve a budget simply where you didn't know where the money was coming from? And, you know, hopefully, you know, with the strategy that the board seems to be following tonight, for giving themselves time to negotiate with the state in good faith, and I think everything that the board has done hasn't been in good faith, and, you know, priority for the board, and I think for all of you, would be your students, and, you know, to me, that's the right priority, and what you need to keep in mind. And I'll just say, some, something's got to give, because the expectation that absent any... absent any significant changes with the school aid formula, or some, uh, significant action by the state, that your circumstances are going to change, it isn't. You know, in fact, it's likely to get worse. So, you know, uh, I think in January, sometime prior to January, you, all of you had expressed, uh, that you're kind of, you know, I think you were feeling frustrated, which you're right, that you, you should, and, and saying, essentially saying, we're not going to take it anymore. And, you know, you're, you're fast coming to that point where you've, you've, you've got to stand behind those words, or the states, you know, got to know that you meant what you said. And I, you know, without saying too much, and, you know, I have, I have the same frustration you do, and sign the same sentiments, that this situation has gone on long enough. Why have this annual battle over money? The same questions every year from the state, and end up at the same point every year. You know, the point you should be ending up every year is T and E for your kids, revenue that you know is going to be there. That's it.
Thank you, Mel. And if there's no further questions, at this point, we need a vote. If you put Mr. Campbell.
Right now, we have no recognition of the public, I just wanted to make that note.
Yes. Well, we do have recognition of the public, but no one has signed to speak.
That's right.
And we have asked. So we do have recognition of the public, uh, and again, we ask in Spanish if someone, if anyone wants to speak. They don't have to, but we are a fully inclusive district. Okay, thank you. Okay, we thank you for coming. Thank you for coming. We need to stay together, united. As you saw tonight, the two letters from the two Jewish organizations are fully supporting the public school children's rights. They will be put on the website this evening, they will be sent to all staff this evening, so we thank you. We have to, together, call Trenton. Together, face that way, not face inward, but face eastward. Okay, what else do we need, Mr. Campbell?
Right now, you will be voting on a resolution, that's on page two and page three of your agenda there. It's basically approving the introduced budget and some other items that are on page...
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by the board president, second of my, Mr. Tricer, okay? Uh, either way, Mr. Tricer or the vice president. Uh, we have a first and a second, any discussion, seeing non-legal?
Mr. Zlakin.
Mr. Zlakin would vote, yes, but he has a leg.
Mr. Chagrin.
Yes.
Mr. Newhouse.
That's Marco, yes.
Mr. Nick Damon.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mr. Chandler.
Yes.
Mr. Tricer.
Yes.
Mr. Zoll.
Yes.
Mr. Rovender.
Yes.
That passes, again, we say to the parents, we say to the parents, even though we may not all look alike, Spanish, I suppose. We are all here together to get the money for your children, which are our children, okay? So thank you for coming, and Oscar, thank you once again for helping out. And at this point...
Make it a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, thank you. Motion.
Motion.
Okay.
Hold the favor.